... I pray would be done by Councilman Florrie, or this by Councilman Emerson. Let us pray. O kind gracious God, give you thanks for this day, thank you for the rain. Lord, we pray for this city and the leadership bless us all, Lord, we ask these things in Christ's holy name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm glad, come on over please.
Mr. Bradford.
Present.
Mr. Emerson.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Carvin.
Present.
Mr. Florrie.
Present.
Ms. Lynch.
Mr. Bowman.
All right, thank you. Uh... Who said that, Mr. Bowman? Okay. Okay, tomorrow I'll be entertaining motion to adopt the minutes of our previous conference and city council meeting. At this time, we will recognize guests, awards, or recognition and communications from council members. I have some guests, any other councilmen have any guests before I bring my guests up? My guests today are members of the Northern and Central Louisiana Interfaith group. We had a great meeting in my office 10 days ago, I guess, and I asked them to come today to further express some of their initiatives and programs so that the city council, the city, the mayor would be also enlightened about what's going on. Now, some of you fill out cards, but because I'm inviting you up as my guest, those who would like to speak on behalf of the Interfaith, I know it's just Lady Carlson, anyone else, then why don't you lead it off and just tell us about Interfaith and your initiative that we all discussed, okay? Oh, wow, okay. May I have a...
I'm Lady Carlson, I'm the lead organizer with Northern and Central Louisiana Interfaith, and we have some folks that want to just talk about some of the things we've been working on and want to collaborate with the council about.
Okay, I think I told you collectively I give you 12 minutes.
Right. And I think we have it.
Okay, all right.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Maxine Davis, and, uh, do I need to give my address and all that?
Just your name is and your address, that's fine.
Okay. My name is Maxine Davis, and my address is 4458 Fairway Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, and I'm a member of Stonewall Baptist Church in Bogers City. What I wanted to brief the council on is last Monday, on the 2nd of August, we had a press conference at the Church of the Highlands, and we had members, Interfaith leaders from across the state, we had leaders from Shreveport, Bogers City, Mendenham, and Lake Providence, and Monroe. And what our press conference was about, we were standing in support of the recent violence that our sister cities have had in Baton Rouge and in Dallas, and Reverend Lorenzo Johnson from Sunflower Baptist Church have been trying to build a relationship with the Bogers Parish Police, and requesting a meeting to begin building a relationship between the young African-American men and officers patrolling our communities. And we feel if our officers are going to be patrolling our communities, they need to know those people that they are patrolling, so that would avoid some of the violence. Reverend Johnson spoke on an incident when he was at Family Dollar in Bogers City, where he and his son saw a police officer, and he walked up to him, and he spoke to him and said, "Thank you for your service." He wanted his son to see that all policemen are not bad, and he wanted the policeman to understand that all citizens are not bad.
Amen.
And so I do have some papers to give you from our press conference, but we're also wearing these badges to gather Louisiana to show our support, because we refuse to be divided.
Amen, thank you. Let's get that literature to the...
We'll have some packets for you.
Oh, yeah, okay, mighty fine.
Ooh.
Ready?
Will this thing come down?
Yes, please, you can use the smaller one if you will, if you please, there's one next to it, yeah, just put that up, how you own the podium. There you go.
Well, I have to be a hand. My name is Willie Myers.
Okay.
And I live at 267 Vine here in Shreveport, and I'm a leader from Mount King Baptist Church. I would speak to you, to you all, for a few moments on workforce development. You know, the Alice Report documented the number of families in our region that are working but barely making ends enough to survive. Interfaith sister organization in Texas and Arizona have developed labor market intermediaries that ties those in training to living wage employment with a career path and benefit. We, they are called labor intermediaries because they connect employers, training providers, and those needing training. This project does not train, they provide social services needed for participants to complete the program. For us, successful job training identify employers that have living wage jobs that go unfulfilled. They're about workers that make $9,000 a year with no hope of advancing. Now, seven of us went to San Antonio to visit Project Quest, which is actually doing this. We would like to start a project here in Shreveport, and we're calling this Project Act, Another Chance to Succeed.
My name is Susan Bedinga, I live at 3814 Crestwell Avenue, I'm a member of All Souls Unitarian Universalist Church and the League of Women Voters. I'm here to talk to you for just a moment about the Healthy Foods Retail Act, which was passed by the legislature in 2009 and funded this year, 2016, for a million dollars. The purpose of the Healthy Foods Retail Act is to encourage retail grocers to come into the food deserts where there are, there's little access to healthy and fresh fruits and vegetables. The Interfaith and Together Louisiana was a major force in acquiring the funding for the Healthy Foods Retail Act, and we are working to encourage grocers to come into our food deserts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Lady Carlson, I am the lead organizer with Northern and Central Louisiana Interfaith, my address is 3301 St. Matthias Drive. And what we wanted to just come and talk to you about today is something called the Inventory Tax Exemption. In the 1930s, a law was passed that gave employers a tax exemption if they were adding to their facility locating in this area with the stipulation that they create jobs. That exemption was for five years, and then it could be extended for another five years, and so 10 years at the most, and basically you were exempted from paying local property taxes. Through our work with Governor Edwards, that program has been reformed, it was being abused. We can show you where employers created no jobs but got the exemption, where the exemptions went on for years and years and years. The governor has signed an executive order, it's in here, so you can look at it and read it. There are three entities that will have the say now about whether or not a company gets the exemption. You don't make the decision, but you now have input, the school board, the Caddo Commissioners, and the Sheriff's Department. We're meeting with each entity, we want to be sure that as they are making the decision about whether a company gets the exemption, that you are included in the conversation, because you'll be receiving tax, local property tax dollars as well. And again, we have the information, have the executive order. One of the things we are talking about is really investing in our citizens, investing in our people. And so as those exemptions, as you are getting dollars back, we are going to be coming before you, we know they're not coming yet, but we'll be coming before you. We'd like to talk about funding project acts. We want both the city, the parish, the school board, we're targeting people between 25 and 55. Crime goes down when people are working, when they're in living wage jobs. The Alice Report, as Mrs. Myers says, documents the number of residents in our city that are not making a living wage, and yet they're working four or five jobs with no benefits. We have an answer, and we also want to build relationships with the police department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Minister Bruce Carroll from the Stonewall Baptist Church of Bogers City, I'm the church's administrator. My address is 508 Carroll Road, Grand King, Louisiana. I stand, given the task just to announce an event that Northern and Central Louisiana Interfaith is hosting on Thursday night, September 29, 2016, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. It'll be at the Paradise Baptist Church, 1706 Hollywood. Invited guests are Governor John Bill Edwards, Mayor Ali Tyler, and other local elected officials. Thank you.
So you're all invited, and we'll be getting more information. And if we could just introduce our name and where we're on the front, so you can sense of...
Good morning. That's right.
Reverend Carroll, just one more time.
What did I say, sir?
Bruce Carroll, Stonewall Baptist Church, all right? Enter Neil Schwartz, Go to Thoughtful Synagogue.
Lower side, League of Women Voters, Calabogers.
Maxine Davis, Stonewall Baptist Church in Bogers City.
Loretta Davis, United Baptist Church, Calabogers.
Cheryl Young, Stonewall Baptist Church, Bogers.
Willie Myers, Stonewall Baptist Church. Susan Bedinga, all... Thank you, any questions, we're happy to answer.
What was that event on the 29th again?
We have a flyer, we have packets for you.
Oh, great, okay.
And it's in the packet.
Thank you.
There's a flyer, there are articles, and we'll give you this article, we only have one, but we'll leave it for you. We'll do it then.
Let me, let me say this, and thank you for coming. It's, and I appreciate you coming, because it takes citizen government relations to make us better. We don't have other answers, and that your initiatives are consistent with some of the interests that this council has, especially this council. I see, you know, I mean, job development, workforce development, their statement about people that have a job usually are not the group that's committing the crimes and the violence in our community. Your initiative, the act initiative in providing a living wage job, that raises the standard a little bit, and I trust that we can, in some ways, work with you to help screen and provide opportunities for those clients that will be coming through your program. So I'm asking that you would, and it may cover it in the package, devise a proposal that could probably enlighten us on the areas in which we can work together. Challenge us. I want all the citizens in Shreveport to challenge this council to do great things for Shreveport. And if you challenge us, you would give us the, 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 the opportunity to research and look at things that we think we can do. I challenged my cohorts in our colleagues' last meeting to be great, to develop legislation to help look at opportunities to, for our citizens, so that we can move this city forward. Your coming here today expresses that sentiment, and I don't want you to stop coming. I want us to engage each other and see how we can move forward. We have a community development, we have workforce job development programs within the city, and I don't know if you're familiar with those, but I want to ask that you, and we'll respond back through the mayor's administration departments to see how we can forge relationships and make that progressive endeavor. But I appreciate you coming, I'm excited about some of the things. I'm not too familiar with the industrial tax incentive...
Exempt exemption.
Exemption?
Not a lot of people are.
Okay. Okay. But if there's opportunities for us to attract new businesses through that, through that means, I'm certainly interested in doing that. I know Councilman Emerson is up to speed on everything, he's smart, but we're going to get familiar, educate ourselves on those opportunities. You didn't, you didn't say the city was one of the entities that could award such exemption.
Well, the governor is the only person. The law says that the governor creates a board, it's called the Board of Industry and Commerce. That board reviews requests from employers across the state to be exempted from local property taxes. And what's happened over the last few years is that that board has become a rubber stamp. And so let me give you an example. Myriant is a company that located to Lake Providence, they got $50 million in federal funds to locate in Lake Providence. Last year, they applied for the local tax exemptions, knowing that they were going to close the plant this year. And so that plant is closed down, it's not in operation, and yet they were exempted from paying local property taxes last year. And that's, that's an egregious example of what's going on, but some other employers have not, you know, have been as guilty. So what the governor is saying is that from now on, and Dr. Woodrow Wilson is the representative from Caddo on that board, now if you are an employer, you have to demonstrate that you are going to create new jobs, you have to sign a contract, so that you can't just sign a one-page, "Give me this money." You have to sign a contract, and then the local taxing entities, again, the sheriff, the commission, and the school board have to say, "Yes, we agree that this corporation gets this exemption." Now, we're asking the governor to cap it. Other states cap it, we do 100%. We're asking that it be, and again, we'll negotiate, we'd like to talk to others, but that there be a cap so that it's not 100%.
Great.
And that you are included, that you, that if Bentley Steel says, "We want an exemption," that then you know about it, and you are included in the conversation, so that, because you're losing tax dollars as well.
Fantastic. Wow, okay, thank you, very enlightening. Any other councilmembers have any questions for Interfaith, Together Louisiana?
I'm not a councilmember, but I'd like to...
Please, Mayor.
Say something, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Lady Carlson, and the rest of the group. I know we have a meeting set for this week.
From Wednesday, yes.
We are actually trying to reach out and do some things with the Interfaith group. You know, I'm familiar with them, and I've met with them a time or two already, and we'd love to sit and talk with you. I've invited some staff members to meet with you on the violence piece, because we plan to do something in September, and we certainly need your input. And also, we'd like to connect you with some of the workforce development training, but certainly we do it through community development. I think together, we can have a greater impact, and, but we'd like to work with, you know, all of the citizens and various groups who are really working hard to make a difference. But we are sitting down with them this week to work on one of their other initiatives with the violence piece. We're excited about it, and I want you to know that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you again for coming. I accept my invitation to come to our inner government meeting on Friday to give a few more you have on your calendar.
Yes, yes, and Mr. Bradford, Councilman, we take your challenge, you'll see a lot of us.
I'm serious, I'm serious. We can, we, I feel comfortable of where we're going as a city, but I think occasionally we need to be pushed even with a greater force from our citizens and our entities within the city who cares about the progress of this city, and you have exhibited that by coming and doing your work. So thank you very kindly, and we'll certainly accept your package of information and review it and see again how we can continue to work together. Thank you very kindly, y'all have a good day. Okay. Kevin will have a monitor, so y'all have to be a little bit...
I don't know.
Not the copy of somebody. I don't really need one. Okay. Mayor, you have any communications, uh, recommendations?
Not today, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Sure. Um... I'm sorry?
Stream not working.
Stream not working either? Oh, okay, down. Down at reports, property standards, screen is present, anybody have any questions, concerns, inquiries regarding our property standard issues?
Close.
Huh? Again, you know, do we have any, I don't have, do we have any appeals today?
One.
We have one, okay. All right, um, there was a couple of issues that came up in my district. One, one was very strongly, I had a strong response from a gentleman who was concerned that his neighbor's yard wasn't up to, up to what he thought was acceptable standard, and I spoke to you about that. Right. Tell me, tell me our approach or environment with, with properties that are not adjudicated.
Well, I mean, the grass was cut, and it was trimmed, and like I told him, if he had an issue with bushes or trees or anything like that, a lot of that's going to be civil, so we don't get involved with it.
Don't get involved with that. And he call you?
I don't know, I get a lot of calls.
Because he threatened to call everybody, even the police.
What's his name? I get a lot of calls.
He lives on Rossinger. I don't know his, his name, it's in my notes at the office.
Let me just see, I haven't gotten a call from anybody about bushes or trees yet, but I get a lot of calls.
I can imagine.
And we always call people back, so when somebody say, "I don't call them back," check with me.
Anyway, he was, he was sort of...
Sometimes they come from frequent flyers, yeah, sometimes there's, there's few callers that, you know, you hear from quite a bit.
Well, he, he had a history, I understand, with, with his neighbor, and felt like his, his property was, kept more groomed than, than his neighbors, and that he wanted the city to somehow enforce some type of, you know, cleanup maintenance to his neighbor's yard, but I went over and looked at it, and I think he did too, and I don't know how the city could actually, well, but he felt like we could. He threatened, "See, I'm gonna call the mayor, I'm gonna call the press, I'm gonna call..." Yes.
Was it needing mowing?
No, no, I mean, I mean, the yard was, was okay, to my observation, but I'm just saying, but he thought it should be more...
Gardening.
More gardening, but anyway.
Well, I saw you mowing on Facebook, I thought I'd send you over there if you need mowing.
If we get people just to cut the grass, we're happy.
On private property.
On private property.
And they can cut the adjudicated property too, if they want to.
But, you know, did he talk to his neighbor? Because, I mean, we can't, there are certain boundaries that we have.
No, I mean, I, from my observation, I knew, I knew from the beginning that it was, it was a squabble between those and that, that the city environment would not, would not, you know, be, be something that would be an issue of the city.
Yes, sir.
But anyway, he, he kept calling, and, but again, I thought, he said he was gonna call the mayor's office.
Called the president, too.
He probably did, he wowed everybody.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Green? Okay, thank you, sir. We received revenue collection implementation reports, ban electronic means, we have that for tomorrow, Mr. Crawford.
Yes. I was sure to warn you. Positive, actually.
I'm sorry?
I said it was actually a positive report since the first...
Positive report.
January, so we're glad to see that.
Which one?
The new sales and use tax report.
But we still, we're still running behind.
It was better. We're still behind, but at least we've stopped.
Stopped the bleeding.
Stopped some of the bleeding.
Some, some of them, we're still about a million down, so.
Yeah, we still got some bleeding.
This is about when it turned down last year, so we knew that it would start leveling off. It was, it was up for the first part of 2015, and it dropped in the middle of the year, so we knew that those, those decreases that we were getting in the first six months should level off for the last half of the year, and this month, or last month holds true to that, so we're hoping we can see a little bit more of an increase maybe in the next five months.
Thank you, and we're looking forward to, at, continue, at least to, you know, sustain what we've done to make sure that we don't run into a deficit in that area. I know some citizens already have inquired, I don't know if there's a rumor out there, we, million dollars, sure. Give us that rumor.
Yes, no rumor.
That's the truth.
That's the fact.
That is not a rumor, that's the truth.
And that's a million dollars under where we are receipts from last year.
Yes.
What are we under budget for that?
So that would be $2 million.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
But we're still gonna have a few more months to go.
Well, let's, let's, let's go shopping.
Spend local.
That's right.
Buy local, and when I say local, I don't mean Amazon dropping it off at your house, go buy something at your local store.
They're transparent, we, the million is right.
Million is right.
That's not a rumor, and I've told some groups that, because people think we got money, and we don't. It's not coming.
Okay, well, we know the challenges before, so let's, let's promote local business.
We are, we are doing that.
Okay, um, no report from our master planning committee on tomorrow, so we'll move forward. No public hearing?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry?
There is no public hearing on the agenda, but tomorrow we will ask you to add one. The council adopted Resolution Number 137 of 2016 on July the 12th, and in that resolution it said that there would be a public hearing on tomorrow. The public hearing was advertised on July the 15th, the 22nd, 29th, and August the 5th, but it was inadvertently left off of the agenda, so we're gonna ask you to add it to the agenda tomorrow, and also the resolution that says that the public hearing was held, and that there was no petition filed or objections filed to actually going through with the, with the proposal. So we'll also probably need to ask you to suspend the rules to bring that up before, the public hearing comes before adding things to the agenda, so we'll need to suspend the rules to bring it up before, so that you can, if it's on the agenda, it can be heard at that time.
Okay, thank you, and I'm sure we'll adhere to that, because, I mean, if it's been advertised, it was part of our legislation, and we just inadvertently left it off the docket, we can, we can correct that a little bit later on, okay? Okay, Mr. Crawford?
Yes, sir. To send agenda legislation, introduce routine ordinances and resolutions, there are none to adopt ordinances and resolution. Resolution 149 authorizes Jose Ruul Vega and Olga Alisa Vega located at 9549 Linwood Avenue to connect the water and sewer systems of the city of Shreveport. Resolution 115 suspends certain provisions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 1 of 6 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the sale, dispensing, and consumption of alcoholic beverages at the Great Raft Brewing. And Resolution 151 suspends provisions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 1 of 6 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the sale, dispensing, and consumption of alcoholic beverages in the 400 block of Lake Street for the anniversary block party for four businesses on Lake Street.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments regarding these resolutions? I think we had an opportunity to review them on the last meeting date, so I don't see any questions. Mr. Crawford, you may continue.
Resolutions regarding second reading and final passage are, which will require only one reading. Resolution 148 suspends effects of Chapter 106 of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to 2901 Mylum Street in regard to variance for parking spaces. Resolution 152 declares the intentions of the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, to issue water and sewer revenue bonds in one or more series in an amount not to exceed $120 million for the purposes of paying the cost of making additional extensive improvements of the combined drinking, water, and wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal systems for the... of the combined drinking, water, and wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal systems for the city, including equipment and fixtures of said city therein, and paying a termination fee relative to the interest rate swap that was entered into by the city in connection with certain LCDA revenue bonds, Shreveport Utility Systems Project Series 2005, employing professionals in providing for other matters in connection therein. Resolution 153 giving preliminary approval for the issuance of not exceeding $25 million for refunding bonds of the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana for the purpose of refunding the city's obligations under a loan agreement relative to the issuance of LCDA revenue refunding bonds, City of Shreveport Independent Stadium Project Series 2008, employing professionals in providing for other matters in connection therein, or therewith.
Thank you. Okay. I'm sure the councilmen have had opportunity to visit with the administration regarding these ordinances, I mean, resolutions. Are there any questions regarding these resolutions? Thank you for making sense.
Introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to August the 23rd, 2016. Resolution 154 employing professionals with respect to the issuance of the City of Shreveport of not exceeding $25 million of refunding bonds for the purchase of refunding the city's obligation under a loan agreement relative to an issuance of LCDA revenue refunding bonds, City of Shreveport Independent Stadium Project Series 2008, and not exceeding $120 million of water and sewer revenue bonds for the purposes of paying the cost of making additions, extensions, improvements in the combined drinking and wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal systems of the city, including equipment and fixtures of said city therewith, and paying a termination fee relative to an interest rate swap that was entered into by the city in connection with certain LCDA revenue bonds, Shreveport Utility Systems Project Series 2005, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Okay, question. Even with the professional fees that's gonna be incumbent upon us, this, this refinancing, you think would certainly be as beneficial as, as, as not doing it?
I think it certainly does. I think, as, as the mayor pointed out previously, the city has pursued all of our outstanding bond debt to determine whether or not it is feasible to refinance now at a lower interest rate. And that's what these three propositions do. It allows us to advertise, it allows us to proceed with the intent to do that. And then at, at the end of the day, if we don't find those savings that we think are in the city's best interest, the city will not proceed with that. And of course, we'll have to come back before this body again before we actually go to bond sale.
Any other questions regarding these resolutions? Seeing none, you may continue, sir.
Introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to August the 23rd, 2016. Ordinance 76 amends the 2016 budget for the grant special revenue fund appropriating the funds authorized therein. This is the $1,214,091. This is for the firefighter grant that they had received. There's a 10% matching fund here, so it will have a co-ordinance number 77. This just sets up the grant itself and the grant funding. And if we go to ordinance 77, ordinance 77 amends the 2016 budget for the general fund appropriating the funds and authorizing therein. This will take the $124,091 and transfer that to the grant. Be mindful here, council members, that this is not being taken out of the general fund operating reserve. This is coming straight out of the fire department's budget that has already been budgeted and approved by this council. So no additional funds there. Ordinance 78 amends the 2016 capital improvements budget for the airport. They have three projects listed for $1.7 million. This is the capital improvements portion of the companion. They'll, the companion is ordinance 79 that refers to just the number three project listed in number 78. This amends the 2016 airports enterprise fund budget for $400,000 to allow those funds from the operating reserve to the airport to go to that number three project listed in 78. The other two projects, one and two, come from revenue bonds already provided by the airport. Ordinance 80 levies a tax of $19 million per dollar on all properties subject to ad valorem taxation within the City of Shreveport for the year 2016 for the purposes of paying principal and interest on any, on the outstanding general obligations bonds of the City of Shreveport. This is, uh, this is not a reassessment or a roll forward. This is simply a legal maneuver that the city has to do every year to replace or re-advertise through the city, its council, and their acceptance of the, of the millage that we already have on the books for paying our general obligation debt that the voters have already paid for. So they're paying the same rate that they paid in 2015 and 2016.
All right, any questions regarding introduction of these ordinances?
I do have a question about 78 and 79.
Yes, sir.
If I look at the backup or the fact sheet on it?
Yep.
Bullet point three. We're appropriating $400,000 to renovate a building that Southern University is also renovating? How, how does that work?
I'll let, I'll let...
Are we adding to their renovations?
I'll let Mr. Thompson come up.
The airport is actually investing $400,000 to renovate a vacant building that Sussila is interested in leasing. In order to make the building capable of leasing, the airport will have to purchase a $200,000 HVAC system. $200,000 of that $400,000 will be reimbursed to the airport by Sussila in the new lease agreement.
And so, well, I can get some more specifics later. I just was curious about some specifics of, like, the term of the deal? Like, how long they're gonna be leasing? And in what right and all that?
Yeah, it is intended to be a long-term lease agreement. The payback on the $200,000 for the renovation will be paid back over five years.
Any other questions? Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Thompson, I'm sorry, Mr. Crawford, you may continue, sir.
That's okay. Ordinances on second reading and final passages. Ordinance 71, closing and abandoning portions of Ponderosa Trail and Sugar Loop Trail and the Lindbrook subdivisions, Units 5 and 5A, in sections 35T, 17 North, and R14 West. Ordinance 73 is the first of several zoning cases. This is C number 54-16, an ordinance amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located on the east side of Wallace Lake Road, 180 feet south of Dalton Drive Street. Shreveport Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from B2A Business Park District to B2 Neighborhood Business District. Ordinance 74 is zoning case number C-55-16, an ordinance amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located on the northeast corner of Industrial Loop and St. James, 293 feet west of Blom Boulevard, Shreveport Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R1D Urban One Family Residential District to B1 Buffer Business District with site plan approval. An ordinance 75, zoning case number C-58-16, an ordinance amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located on the south side of Southfield Road, 750 feet east of Yuri Drive, Shreveport Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from B1 Buffer Business District to R1D Urban Family Residential District.
Okay, we've had at least three opportunities to look at these over the last, uh, three weeks. So are there any questions or queries regarding these final reading ordinances? Seeing none, thank you. Is there any other business on ordinance legislation?
None of the tabled legislation is being asked to come off by the administration.
Okay, the council? All right, so let's, again, I gotta apologize, I don't have a monitor, so.
Well, on property standards appeal, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm coming. I was, I was gonna say that my, my assistant chair is, he don't have a monitor either, so we we're wigging it. I property standard appeals.
You have one.
Before Terrence gets up here, I'll say that we've already talked and this property is making good progress. And I'd like to move for a 90-day extension, which I believe has the support of the department. And the homeowner is continuing to work on it and should be done.
I'll second that.
Okay. Wait a minute, Mr. Green? We may, we may save you some time and some effort, sir.
I think you have to hook up that computer.
I mean, uh...
We have, we have talked. There has been substantial progress.
Councilman Efferson has made a motion that there be a 90-day extension postponement.
Good deal.
Seconded by Councilman Horford. The question is, do any of the council members want to review the property? The councilmen, the council members are comfortable with the motion and the second? And we don't necessarily want to see your visual. So, are those in favor of the motion? Vote yes. I mean, vote, you have to vote yes, but just vote.
I think we got a hand vote, huh?
Vote. That motion passes, five to two, two out of the chamber. Thank you.
Made the motion.
Yes. Thank you, sir. All right.
That house, by the way, is looking great.
I mean, it went from one of the worst on the block to one of the best. So it's still got a little work to be done in the back of it, but that front is looking great, yeah.
And I appreciate you, councilmen, of getting and reviewing your issue with the administration prior to the meeting. That will always save us some time. Even though I don't wanna make a practice of not reviewing the visual, but I just wanted to thank you for reviewing it with the council, to be with the administration. All righty.
Reports from offices, boards, and commissions.
Report from offices, board, and committees. Are there any reports from council members? Uh, let me, let me make an observation real quick. That is, on, on Friday, the 12, I mean, 11:30, actually, there's gonna be two, two committee meetings. One committee meeting and one intergovernmental meeting on Friday. The meeting with the steering committee of the chamber has been confirmed, Mr. Thompson.
Did you talk to Todd? We think that it's gonna be okay. It hasn't, it's not confirmed yet. And we also sent an email to the administration asking about participation on that.
Yes.
But, as you know, now see, we do need to talk about equipment.
Ain't got no money.
Sooner than later.
I, I don't think, I don't think that was planned, Mr. Chairman. I hope not. A lot of it is going out. But we do need to talk about it. And the expenses of this room are shared 50/50 with the commission.
Okay.
And there was a committee set up at the time as we went into this space for things like this. And we are, we could meet at 10 o'clock or 10:30 on Friday morning before the intergovernmental committee meeting. I think the commission would be agreeable with that. And we would hope that we would have, at that time, data processing or IT or whatever it's named, would give us a list of equipment needs, probably with a priority, and prioritize those so that the committee would have something to look at and hopefully make a decision.
I, I hope that that would be the case. I think we will be advantaged by, by having some of the needs. I mean, I know, I need them. I need them. Some apparatus that make me see what's going on. This can't be a continuous practice. I would trust that. Mayor, uh, will the administration be able to afford somebody at the meeting if we have it?
Yes, sir. I mean, I'm, we're gonna try to be there. We, we don't have a date and a time yet. And I'm just trying to, I mean...
We think it's gonna be at 10 o'clock on Friday morning before the intergovernmental committee meeting. And we hear the commission says that they're okay with that.
Okay, all right, so we will, 10 o'clock on Friday, the 12th.
Okay, we, we have that, but I thought you were having another meeting?
No, no, the intergovernmental meeting is at 11:30.
Okay, okay.
In the, in the, in the...
And the other one's at 10 o'clock?
Yeah, that's the joint meeting of the, of the chamber committee.
But in order for it to be a good meeting, we need, we would like to have some information from the administration. And they also want to talk about security.
Tell them, Mayor. About what?
Security.
Security, okay. But anyway, I'm sorry?
I called you earlier. The information that they need from IT, is that, is there a list or something that we can?
Yeah, Dan has talked to us for a year about the equipment needs in this room.
Certainly.
And so we just need a proposal and then all of the items that are needed and then maybe by priority.
Gotcha.
So that if we can't get all of the money, at least we'll know the most.
Okay, we'll have it, we'll have it ready.
Right. We just, we just didn't know that you had been talking to Dan because he hadn't told us that. So it's a good thing. Just let us know what you need.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and as we move forward, I don't think we are in a position to expedite the upgrade. But, I mean, we can actually start budgeting and looking at opportunities to budget it for future.
Right, uh, you know, I don't know if there's some items that need to be done right or ways we need to amend the budget.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll have to ascertain that at the meeting. Yeah, okay. Yeah, so I don't wanna have a blank monitor too often. Okay, so just have some resources there for us to, to look at on, on Friday.
Now that we know, we'll...
Then on the, then on the, at the 11:30 meeting, I think you submitted some items for discussion.
I believe so. Let me check to see.
And we got plenty from the commissioners.
Slept something.
Yeah, and we, we didn't get very many from the council members. Council members, was there any item that you wanted to be a part of the, of the total meeting?
I do probably have a few. You know, I think sometimes a lot of the issues that I think of like that, I tend to discuss in the master plan committee meeting because we have somebody from the parish and the city and the NPC. But some of those items, I may have felt, you know, I may have, when I've seen that, I may have felt like it was redundant because I've already had those conversations. But it probably isn't because we probably haven't had those discussions in that setting. And it may be beneficial that I share a few of those items.
Would you do that? Yeah, I could put, put Mr. Efferson on the agenda just to review the prop, I mean, the master plan items, you know, basically the, the issues and the, and the progress of what the master plan has been discussing over the past... Yes, sir.
Mr. Eff, will you be commenting on the UDC?
Yeah, I mean, I think we should, I mean, I think in that setting is a good time to just mention, not to fully discuss. Certainly, I think it's more appropriate in that master plan committee meeting. But to make sure that everybody in that room knows where to address questions that they have about it, what the latest, you know, update is. And really also, not just the UDC, of course, but some of the other things in the master plan, like, you know, just making sure that there's a contact point at each body that sort of, we can check to see if they're aware of what that body's responsibilities are in the master plan? You know, because there are, it's not all the city's responsibility to get that plan done, you know? I mean, it's a number of entities that are in there.
Yes.
And sometimes, it just helps for us to communicate that a little bit. So, I mean, I may not try to open a long discussion, but more give a brief presentation, I think, of how people can access that information and, and sort of encourage everyone to do it before the next meeting. And then maybe we can have some more conversation points at the next meeting.
Great idea. I mean, since we're gonna be there anyway. Let me ask Attorney Bradford, is he, is he here?
Yes.
Let me ask, let me ask you something, attorney. Have you, have you been up to speed on the UDC proposal?
I followed the public hearings and I don't know all the language that's in there right now. The proposed language, I've reviewed most of it. What's been available, made available to the public. Is there a particular area that you...
Yeah, well, I want you, and, you know, you don't have to have it prepared for, for this week, I mean, for Friday. But I, I need to, you to review some of the, some of the recommendations and, and see if we're, and I'm talking about the council, are giving up any legislative authority that had been vested to us if by this document being, being passed and approved. I'm very concerned that we may be giving up some, some charter authority that we may not need to give up.
Yes, sir.
In what now?
Some legislative authority that has been vested to us through the charter, through the, through, through adopting the UDC.
Okay, I, I mean, are you referring to the, some of the appeals?
Yes.
Okay.
I was gonna ask, is there a more narrow, do you want the, an entire overview?
I mean, that's, that's done explicitly with the intent of, of doing that. And that was always from the beginning.
Yeah, but I'm saying, but is, is it circumventing our legal home charter document? That's what I'm asking.
Okay, I, I mean, I don't believe so, but...
Anyway, we're, we're looking, I mean, that's, that, that's one of the last pieces of, of this. I mean, we've been looking at it, but, but there are some issues and areas at which we would sort of relinquish some, some appeal processes and it goes directly to another entity. entity.
Right. Our office will make sure that there's no conflict in charter, and I'll, I'll try and make you note of each instance where, even though it may not be a charter conflict, there is a relegation of power or a changing, as you would see it, okay?
Yeah, and, and if you can have it for our meeting in which the, Mr. Swinney will be giving his master plan committee report, maybe two weeks from now.
Okay.
And if you, if you have any information that you think you need to expedite getting to me or to council members, just email it to us.
Yes, sir.
Review that prior to the meeting.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. So please, let, let Jackie know if you guys are gonna be able to make it to the meeting, because we prepare and lunch, and we want to be pretty close and accurate to making those preparations. Okay?
Friday.
Friday at 11:30, but I need you there at 10:00, and you, Mr. Emerson. Any other offices, members need to make a report?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think we have a public safety meeting toward the end of the month, and I'm asking that we discuss also a meeting about rummage sales, illegal rummage sales. Think we need to visit that authority, who has authority to enforce that. Right now, I had a two-day episode with rummage sale, illegal rummage sale, moving corner to corner, placing signs out into the medium, and found out that he finally came downtown and got a permit. But it is very problematic right now. People are using, not garage sales, but rummage sales.
Okay, yes, sir.
And I had a complaint from a citizen, she called me about 14 times, because she said that she's paying occupational license and she's paying taxes, and this individual is trying to skirt around doing that. So I think we need to discuss that in public safety, where we at and where we need to go.
Okay. And I'm gonna be calling a, a small intervention business task force meeting within the next month, Mayor, and I need to get a report from the Fair Share Department on, on our, on numbers, see how we've progressed.
Okay.
I know you told me that, you know, we seem to be progressing.
We are.
Prior to that meeting, I need to review those numbers.
Okay, I'll get Ms. Barnes to provide that information.
Into all the council members, if you please.
Sir.
And, and supply all the council members with the, with the, with the information.
I will.
Okay. All righty, no other members with reports, Mr. Clerk.
On the 23rd, there will be an appeal. It concerns a special exception use for chickens, and with the new UDC passes, you won't get those in the.
Say that again.
Roll down. Chickens.
Somebody wants to have chickens in their yard.
Oh. It's not fried chicken.
You know we'd be opposed to that, wouldn't you?
Okay.
But anyway, that, that's a, that's a big deal.
Maybe the owners of the chickens would be. But it's, yeah, okay.
But there, there's a lot of opposition, and it could get.
Is there to this particular one?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Anyway, that will be on for the next. The mayor's also appointed new assistant city attorney, Ms. Karen Strand. I believe she's present. That will be on the next agenda for consultation.
Okay. Attorney, would you introduce your proposed new staff person?
Sure. Madam Mayor, Chief Crawford, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I'd like to introduce to Karen Strand. She will give a few words, give her a little history of herself. I think she's gonna be a very competent lawyer, gonna be very capable, and comes with some experience as well from the, almost as great of Louisiana State of Texas, but she's from a little west of the border, but she's moved into Shreveport, made this her home. I think she'll be a great addition to the city attorney's office.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Chief Crawford, Mr. Chairman, distinguished council members, thank you for this opportunity. I'm looking forward to having the opportunity to represent the city of Shreveport. I was an assistant city attorney for the city of Tyler, and I come from, come from Tyler, Texas. I grew up in East Texas, but I have fond memories of Shreveport. My parents, as growing up, they would always bring me over to Hamels Park, the amusement park, I think it must be closed now, the Red River Revel, as a Girl Scout, I would come over for that, and the Hayride Kitchen, I remember having dinner up here. So, we, you know, you weren't too far, it's just I got an extension of East Texas or either, you know, Shreveport's an extension into Texas, but thank you again, and look forward to seeing you in two weeks.
Okay, we, we had got a pre-copy of your resume from the city attorney's office. It was very impressive, a lot of great recommendations, so you must have left a good, good job record behind.
Well, yes, sir. I married my husband, who's a personal chef over here in Louisiana, and so that's what I'm here for.
That's why.
My, my great husband, and I'm so glad to have this opportunity to carry forward my career over here in Louisiana.
Your.
And I'm extremely happy and pleased to be working with Mr. Bradford. I'm so far extremely impressed with this young man, and I am looking for, I love the office dynamic that they have, and, and I look forward to working with them.
So great, and I thank you all for, with your experience in city government, municipal government, again, an advantage to the office, even though, you know, we're, we're like you, proud of Mr. Bradford. He's really been an excellent city attorney, and he has set a standard that by bringing you in, I think their standard is being continued and maintained.
Thank you.
So we're looking for, any, any particular area that she would be assigned to, Mr. Bradford?
We're letting her get her feet wet right now, she's seen a little bit of everything. I want to get her involved in some of the contract review as well as deals with our board and commission. Very capable, she's got some prosecutorial experience.
Ooh.
We'll have her over here at 505 most of the time, so we're getting her acumen to going parts of the city.
Thank you. Any other council member have any questions? Attorney Strand?
I'm at Hamels, too.
Thank you, thank you.
We look forward to your confirmation. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of other.
Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Tomorrow, I'll read a notice of a public meeting. We are required by statute to note, to read a notice, saying that the city council will probably adopt an ordinance to levy the taxes of $19,000 per dollar for good service obligations at its meeting on August 23rd. So I'll read a notice that I'm required to read. And tomorrow, after the regular meeting, I think the chairman has called a special meeting for the purpose of holding an executive session to look at a proposed suit Durham versus City of Shreveport, and I think I emailed you a copy.
You did, and at, at sort of a time, time.
We set it for 4:30 or immediately after the regular meeting, whichever occurs first.
But I, I meant, I thought the city attorney said, we, we look at this now, we make it move forward, is that correct, Mr.?
We are asking for an executive session to try and either resolve or determine the next step in this litigation. It's a workers' compensation matter. If we go into the executive session, we may have some resolution to it.
And have some resolution to it, thank you.
And I'll explain it further in the executive session.
Okay, good. And I, so council members, be prepared to stay over a little bit, and it's at 4:30, so it's 4:05 now, so we should be able to get out tomorrow at 4:30. If not, I'm a whole councilman flurry accountable for that.
Oh.
Yeah, okay. All righty, are there any further communication for any of the council members? I want to thank you, councilmen, for providing us with a free, free pass to come and eat at your newest restaurant in your district. Did you go to the grand opening?
I did this morning, 10 o'clock, we cut the ribbon, and they, they served over 200 people yesterday, and so Zaxby's is now in Southern Hills, and they left going toward North Market today with the equipment to start building another one.
Wow.
This is how you do the chickens in the house? This is fried chicken we were talking about?
Yep. Chicken, y'all remember Keep Happy?
Oh, yes.
Yes. Chicken fly, what is that doing?
I don't remember it, I remember. You left that to Mr. Thompson.
I know you remember this a little.
We have chicken war out there in Southern Hills, huh?
Chicken war, chicken price war.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your service, Mr. Thompson, and thank you for your service, Mr. Crawford. And the council members, if there's nothing else that we need to discuss today, we'll see you tomorrow, and this meeting is adjourned.
You know, you didn't ask me if I had anything else to say. That's okay, I don't have anything else to say.
Oh, Mr..
But you normally ask me.
Well, we don't have our screen, we don't have my screen, man.
That's okay. You forgot about, you forgot about, I'm still his mayor, too.
That's right.
That's not something on your screen, it's something in your heart.
I'm just saying, okay.
See what you did.
I was just saying, okay.